I'm calling this meeting of the Silver City Town Council to order. Would you please join us in the Pledge of Leadership? Our pledge of leadership is to keep fire at the United States of America, including the citizens, our nation under God, inevitable, for liberation and justice for all. Thank you. We'd like to welcome everybody here tonight. I'd like to especially welcome Police Chief Portillo and a news reporter, Mr. Roger Lance, who reports for the Grand County beat, has a special guest here tonight. And I'll just let him introduce her. Roger?
This is Claire Green. She and her family are from here, but 10 years ago they moved away to Papua New Guinea when they did fishing there. And then three years there, and then seven years they were in Tennessee. But now they moved back to Silver City. She's the mom of the job at the speech pathologist at Fort Bear, and her dad has a job with Dr. Ratliff doing administrative nursing. And Claire, after the summer is over, she's going to the international school in Peru. And so she's looking forward to that. And she wanted, she said, "I want a town council meeting." And I said, "Why?" No, I didn't say that. And so here she is.
Welcome, Ms. Green. Next on the agenda is changes to the agenda. Do any of the councils want to make changes to the agenda? No changes. Next is proclamation. And since June 12 through 15, 2019, is First New Mexico Wild West Pro Rodeo Week. The town would like to recognize this with a proclamation. And receiving the proclamation will be Tyler Brown, who is president of the Southwest Horsemen's Association. Whereas the Southwest Horsemen's Association and High Low Pro Rodeo will be presenting the first New Mexico bank, Wild Wild West Pro Rodeo, in Silver City, New Mexico. And whereas the Wild Wild West Pro Rodeo is celebrating its 29th year in Grand County in 2019. And whereas the Wild Wild West Pro Rodeo reflects the western heritage and history of Silver City. And whereas the Wild Wild West Pro Rodeo is an important step in the process of improving the economic vitality of New Mexico in the sporting world. Now therefore, I Ken Lader, mayor of the town of Silver City, Grand County, New Mexico, in view of the inherent value of this, do hereby proclaim the week of June 12 through June 15, 2019, as the first New Mexico Bank Wild Wild West Pro Rodeo Week, and urge all citizens to attend and enjoy the rodeo.
Yeah, just briefly, on behalf of the Southwest Horsemen's Association and the Wild Wild West Pro Rodeo, want to thank the town of Silver City and our community here for their ongoing historic support and support going into the future. And we'd like to invite everybody to come out and bring their family and enjoy the rodeo the week of June 12 through the 15. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Next on the agenda is council comments, and we'll begin with Councilor Ray.
Thank you, Mayor. First things first, I want to thank Mr. Chief Portillo to mention about Officer Jaree and Officer Little. They were very observant in the blues festival. They were, they thought that somebody was selling liquor. And we went down there and checked it out, and no, they weren't. But thank them because they were very observant about that. And also, to the crew at the recycle plant, they gave the kid from Sixth Street a tour. And according to the, to the people from Sixth Street, the kids were very, very happy to get to see it there. And to, to please to thank them also, La Gareta and the crew that were there. And one more thing. Next time council meeting, I probably will have an NOI to see if we can bring the side by sides back again. It'll probably be the same thing, but we'll really try and stress on just to see if we may be able to do it as a trial basis, six months or a year's time. And with that, thank you.
Councilor Amos Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have two brief announcements. One is to remind all the parents, grandparents, and caretakers out there that there are a lot of activities in Silver City over the summer. The recreation department has programs, the municipal pool will be opening, and the public library has activities for youth. It's every day that it is open. And the second thing is, please put on your calendar for July 13, from 10:00 a.m. until 2:00 p.m. for the District Two Territorial Charter volunteer work. We will be installing parlet features behind the historic Waterworks Building near Jose Barrio School. We have a lot of beautiful ideas and plans, and look forward to a kind of a play day out there in the beautiful area that's going to be co-created. Thank you.
Councilor Bettison.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, I would like to publicly thank Sergeant Joseph Arredondo and his officers that were there at the Blues Festival and facilitating area parking for Representative Dotte Small, who came to visit and made one stop at the Blues Festival in Silver City during her extensive tour of the district. And I appreciate them for their willingness to make sure that there's somewhere where to park so that she could get in and out relatively easy. And I appreciate the fact that she was there. But I also thank all the officers for all the work that they did at the Blues Festival. I tried to thank as many as I could for being there. I know that we're family manpower. But I also want to recognize them and our Regional Arts Council for another great Blues Festival. So, thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Councilor Connor.
Thank you, Mayor. I would echo what Councilor Bettison said. The Regional Arts Council did an amazing job of yet another year of really great blues music. I know it was enjoyed by a lot of people. I also want to thank the Conna family for doing the ninth annual Nillingman Bike Run. That event continues to get larger and larger, and it's growing in popularity. And I think eventually he's been able to grow his space. But having been there for the ninth year in a row, I'm very impressed with what that business does for our community. So I just wanted to thank them publicly.
Thank you. Any other comments from the council? Councilor Ray?
Thank you, Mayor. We will be having a rededication at the Hareke Park on June 8 at the Spring Street Park. And the mayor's going to be cooking, so be sure, be sure he's asking for kids too. Thank you.
I thought you were going to help him cook.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Next is the approval of minutes of the May 14, 2019, regular meeting. Do I hear a motion? Councilor Amos Smith?
Let me add this one. First of all, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the minutes of the regular town council meeting of the town of Silver City of May 14, 2019.
Is there a second? Councilor Bettison?
If there are a second motion, I want to state that the minutes were excellently done, as always. Please press the microphone.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Pose may. Motion carries. Minutes approved. Next item on the agenda is public input. There was one person signed up who wanted to talk about an item on the agenda later on, so I'll wait until we get to that agenda item. The next item on the agenda is reports. Mr. Brown had Gary Staley, is that still?
No, sir. He requested that class come in and follow him and get back in school.
Okay. Any other reports, Mr. Brown? Next is a public hearing. And before I read this, I'd like to just make a few comments. If you have a copy of the agenda, I'll read, I'll read part of this and then explain a few things. Next on the agenda is 9A, a public hearing entitled Approval/Disapproval of Ordinance Number 1279, and ordinance to amend the official zoning map for several tracts of land from a rural district to open space, district of town-owned property on Boston Hills, for tracts of land described as... Okay, I'm going to read the way this is written, then make a few comments, and then for the rest of it, I will read it verbatim the way it's written. Portions of quarter. A quarter is a quarter of a section. A section is 640 acres, and a quarter of that is 160 acres. So in this description, S stands for section, and then you'll see another term, T, which is township, and then you'll see an R for range. And back then, that's a way of locating a place on a map where you've got a grid system, and the vertical lines is township, and horizontal lines is range. And then there'll be some interesting sounding names here which represent mining claims. And back in those days, when people would stake out a mining claim, they named them for all sorts of varieties of reasons, a girlfriend, or where they were from, or something like that. And then one other term you will hear is MS, which stands for mineral survey. So, continuing, portions of quarter, NES, O9T, 18SR, 14W, 14W, Apex, that's the name of the claim, MS, 1725, 15.80 AC, which is acres. Then quarter, NES, O9T, 18SR, 14W, 1725, 15.8 acres. Quarter, NES, O9T, 18SR, 14W, Fiero, NO2, number two, MS, 1725, 20.60 acres. Quarter, Northeast S, O9T, 18SR, 14W, Fiero, number five, MS, 1725, 11.60 acres. Quarter, NES, O9T, 18SR, 14W, Fiero, number six, MS, 1725, 9.60 acres. Next, quarter, Northeast S, 04T, 18SR, 14W, Paw Value, MS, 1589, 20.30 acres. Next quarter, NES, O4T, 18SR, 14W, PT Silver Pick, MS, 1494, 11.363 acres. Next quarter, NES, O9T, 18SR, 14W, Sam Johnson, MS, 1581, 20.6 acres. All of quarter, NES, 10T, 18SR, 14W, Virgin, MS, 1581, 20.6 acres. Quarter, NES, 10T, 18SR, 14W, Macado, MS, 1725, 20.60 acres. Quarter, NES, 10T, 18SR, 14W, Adonis, MS, 1725, 20.600 acres. Quarter, NES, 10T, 18SR, 14W, California, MS, 1725, 20.60 acres. Quarter, NES, O9T, 18SR, 14W, Plymouth Rock, MS, 1725, 20.60 acres. Quarter, NES, O9T, 18SR, 14W, Cove, MS, 1725, 20.6 acres. Quarter, Northeast S, 10T, 18SR, 14W, North EXT Volcano, MS, 154, 15.18 acres. S, 10T, Higuita, anything in there? 18SR, 14W, PT North Extension Volcano, MS, 154, 1542.00 AC, parentheses, cemetery tank site, close parentheses. Quarter, NES, 10T, 18SR, 14W, Atlantic, MS, 1585, 10.721 acres. Quarter, NES, O9T, 18SR, 14W, inevitable? Yeah, MS, 1521, 20.648 acres. Quarter, NES, 10T, 18SR, 14W, Atlas, MS, 1784, 18.300 acres. Quarter, NES, O3T, 18SR, 14W, King Bolt, MS, 1784, 18.70 acres. Quarter, Northeast S, O4T, 18SR, 14W, Molly Gibson's Cousin, MS, 1494, 17938 acres. Quarter, NES, O4T, 18SR, 14W, NAID, Nade Queen, MS, 1589, 15.40 acres. S, O4T, 18SR, 14W, PT Silver King, MS, 1494, 14945.164 AC. And the applicant is the town of Silver City. Any questions on that? In this hearing, the town council will serve as the hearing board, and I, as mayor, will be the presiding officer. The hearing will be conducted as follows. The town staff shall present a brief synopsis of the proposed amendments to the Land Use and Zoning Code, and describe the actions and recommendations of the Planning and Zoning Commission. I will then permit the councilors to question staff, and after that questioning has been completed, I will ask for public input as to the substance of the proposed amendments. Who will be presenting the proposed amendments to the Land Use and Zoning Code?
I'm the head of the town of Silver City, and I'll be presenting.
Does the clerk have to swear her in? Because it's a public hearing. And public testimony can only occur if they actually are sworn in, since it's a public
Is there anyone else in the room who is presenting any testimony? Okay, thank you, Councilor Bettison.
Thank you.
Okay, please raise your hand and repeat after me. I state my name.
I do not have a hand.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That the testimony I am about to give.
That the testimony I am about to give.
In the manner before this council.
In the manner before this council.
Is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Under penalty of protection.
So this is case VC 19-01. It's the Boston Hill, town of Silver City. It's an amendment to the official zoning map for rural to open space of town-owned property on Boston Hill. There's a zoning district for open space that was not currently being utilized to reflect the current uses. There's many acres of open space within town limits which should be preserved, and this zone change will help accommodate that. Section 3.1.12 of the Land Use Code of 2010 defines open space as the open space district is intended to preserve and enhance public open space. Purposes served by set lands include recreational use such as hiking and bicycling, preservation of scenic vistas, preservation of sensitive lands, protection of natural vegetation, wildlife, and landforms, and protection of natural areas for such natural processes as flooding to occur without damaging development. It's currently zoned rural, which is intended for low-density single-family residential uses, so we felt like it should be preserved and should be zoned open space. Here is the map proposing all of the parcels that are owned by the town within the town limits on Boston Hill. The legal descriptions, they came from the Grand County Assessor Parcel Map, which matches the legal summary on their website. In the upcoming month, we'll work with the town attorney to file an updated deed that'll include the original acreages and any additions. And also, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended that the town find out who owns these three parcels that you can see in the middle that are not included in the change. So with the help of Z3 Planners, we found out that the two triangle pieces are owned by the BLM, and that other little sliver is owned by the town. So I think it was a mapping error in the past, and it's just something that didn't get recorded. It's still owned by the town. When the Planning and Zoning Commission makes its recommendation to the town council, and when the town council makes the final decision, they shall at a minimum make at least one of the following findings. The proposed amendment is in substantial compliance with the town's comprehensive plan. The proposed amendment will not adversely affect the implementation of the goals and policies of the town's comprehensive plan. The proposed amendment is justified in order to correct a mistake in the town's comprehensive plan, an error in assumptions about the property, surrounding uses, population forecasts, rate of land consumption, or other factors. The proposed amendment will not adversely impact the public health, safety, or general welfare, and will promote the original purposes of the Land Use Code. The proposed amendment responds to change conditions such as changes in assumption on capital investments, road locations, population trends, land committed to development, density, use of further studies that have been completed since adoption of the Land Use Code. The proposed amendment is necessary in order to respond to state and/or federal legislation, and the proposed amendment provides additional flexibility in meeting the objections of this Land Use Code without lowering the standards of the Land Use Code. And the recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission, it is the recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission that this zone change may be approved based on the following findings. Number one, the proposed amendment is in substantial compliance with the town's comprehensive plan. The zoning map should be updated to reflect all categories and current uses. Number two, the proposed amendment will not adversely affect the implementation of the goals and policies of the town's comprehensive plan. The town should coordinate land use and community design goals with the goals of other planning elements such as housing, community design, transportation, and economic development. And number four, the proposed amendment will not adversely impact the public health, safety, or general welfare, and will promote the original purposes of the Land Use Code. The proposed change will stay aligned with the particular purposes of the Land Use Code, specifically purpose 1.2.5, which states to encourage a more efficient use of land and public services, and to reflect changes in technology of land development. And number seven, the proposed amendment provides additional flexibility in meeting the objections of this Land Use Code. The open space zoning district was not being utilized to reflect the current use.
Any questions from the council? Councilor Ms. Green?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I've already done one. So you said that the major purpose of the open space zoning is preservation.
Yeah.
And you said that as current zoning of rural would allow types of development. So are you saying essentially that open space means that there won't be any particular types of development allowed there? Or does it mean any types of development? Could you say a little bit more about what's the difference between open and rural?
Well, rural allows low-density single-family development or residential development, although there's no legal right-of-way to really any of these parcels. It wouldn't be allowed anyway. But zoning as open space gives it more preservation, so that change could never happen, unless a zone change happened in the future. But this just gives it that protection.
So, you know, essentially rural is to pass, if the council were to approve it, it means that that map that you showed would be really for preservation for nature, for some recreation as it's currently being used.
Yeah.
So hiking and bicycling are two of the things that are going on up there. Does recreation include any other types of activities that you can foresee?
Not uses included in this zoning district.
Yeah.
It depends what's allowed through ordinance or... Like you're not allowed to have off-road recreational vehicles up there.
So that does not open up more off-road. Okay, thank you very much.
Any other questions? Councilor Bettison?
Thank you, Mayor. So the two triangular spaces, as you noted earlier, are owned by the BLM. So would there be an option to pursue working with the BLM to get those transferred to the town? Sometimes they do land exchanges.
Can I say? Are you clarifying or are you justifying?
Clarifying a question about whether or not we can...
We have had discussions with the other...
Just a clarification, since in the documentation that we originally received, we didn't know who owned the parcels. So, although there was mention in the documentation...
in the documentation that we got from the P&amp;Z, that they had mentioned... Someone had mentioned in testimony that the BLM needed access to their property.
Right.
So you clarified that those triangles are owned by BLM, and then that little narrow thing was a mapping error, that that's actually owned by the town.
Yes. So originally, when I was working on this, I used the Grant County Parcel Map to get property owner information to contact property owners. Well, those three pieces had no property owner listed. So the county didn't have any record. They would have taken a title search, but I did get help from the Z3 Planners, and they were able to find out, just doing some research.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that we understood that we're currently looking at it with those pieces removed, because that is what was before us.
Yeah.
And, okay. And then, I guess the only other question is, just to go back to the use of open space, it is preservation-minded, and I think that in the Land Use Code, it's very specific about what's permitted on open space.
Yes.
And my understanding is that the majority of that area was acquired by the use of a donation to the town of Silver City for open space.
Yeah.
And I can't remember the lady's name. Bessie Merrill Forward. Yeah, and that... So it's going back to the original intent of the donation, the request by Bessie Merrill Forward State, to have purchased that area for open space. I mean, that's just something I know from... You know, their money went to a number of different entities. So, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Councilor Ray?
Thank you, Mayor. Do you have any idea how big those parcels are?
They're in the legal description. That was kind of detailed. They're all defined by that.
Okay.
Maybe we could ask it differently.
Councilor Madison?
Maybe we could ask a question on a different way. What's the total number of acres?
I did not take a total.
Okay.
Boston Hill, you mean?
Of the area that we're considering. I mean, we could add all the acres up real fast, but I was just wondering if she actually had done that and knew the total acreage that's in that.
Yeah. Actually, the total acreage is 300 and something of Boston Hill.
Just go over half a section. Okay, yeah. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, or comments? Do I hear a motion? Councilor Ray? Mr. Scarrow.
Nobody indicated that they had desired to present any evidence. Nobody has been sworn in.
Nobody was sworn in, that's why.
Right. But it wouldn't be a bad idea to ask if anybody has any questions or comments... Questions, rather than giving testimony, they can ask a question on the staff.
Okay, does any of the general public have any questions about this matter? And Councilor Ray?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve ordinance number 1279 to amend the official zoning map for several tracts of land as described in Appendix A of the proposed ordinance, from rural district to open space district, and further to adopt the findings as recommendations of the Planning and Zoning Commission. And I'll go with it. Number four, the proposed amendment will not adversely impact the public health, safety, or general welfare, and will promote the original purposes of the Land Use Code. Should we read it? This proposed change will stay aligned with the particular purposes of the Land Use Code, specifically Purpose 1.2.5, which states to encourage a more efficient use of land and public services, and to reflect changes in technology of land development.
Is the Hearing Board prepared now to vote on this? Second?
Mr. Mayor, I'll take it back. Motion is stated.
Okay. Roll call, please, then.
Councilor Conner?
Aye.
Councilor Ray?
Aye.
Councilor Anderson?
Aye.
Councilor Madison?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item is unfinished business. Under unfinished business 10A is the approval/disapproval of waiver of NMSA 1978 60-6B-10 for alcohol sales near a church for a restaurant, beer, and wine liquor license with on-premises consumption only, with Sunday sales by the drink and patio service. Application number 1118720. Name of applicant, Lee Allen, LLC DBA Adobe Springs Cafe, 4109 North Silver Street, Silver City, New Mexico. Proposed location, 614 North Bullard Street, Silver City, New Mexico, 88061. And?
Yes, Mayor, Councilor. I'd like to first apologize for overlooking the necessity of the waiver. During the last counseling, it should have been listed in the description of that agenda item, and I overlooked it in the package. The package from the Alcohol Gaming Division included a letter from the Episcopal Church of the Good Shepherd, and they had no objection to the service of alcohol within 300 feet of their church. And so this evening, I'm asking for your approval of that waiver.
Are there any questions from the... Or comments? Any questions or comments from the general public? Do I hear a motion? Councilor Ray?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve a waiver of NMSA 1780 60-6B-10 for alcohol sales near a church for a restaurant, beer, and wine liquor license with on-premises consumption only with Sunday sales by the drink and patio service. Application number 1118720. Name of applicant, Lee Allen, LLC DBA Adobe Springs Cafe, 4109 North Silver Street, Silver City, New Mexico. Proposed location, 614 North Bullard Street, Silver City, New Mexico, 88061.
Thank you. Is there a second?
One second. One second, that motion is stated.
Any discussion, or counter? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed, nay. Motion carries. Next, under unfinished business is 10A. The approval/disapproval of superseding notice of intent, ordinance number 1272, and ordinance amending Chapter 6, Animals, Section 6-1, Definitions, adding a new Section 6-15, Keeping of Honeybees, and a new Section 32-7 permitting undesirable bee behavior of the Code of Ordinances of the Town of Silver City. Councilor Amon Smith, this is your item.
Thank you. Just to start with, I really want to give an introduction to the public and my colleagues here. So August, a year ago, last August, there was an incident at a dog park near the corner of Virginia and 12th, where two citizens were stung, or at least were reported stung. One was hospitalized, with over 200 bee stings. And another dog was also stung. This bee attack was from an urban honeybee hive located across the streets from the dog park. A lot had known of other in these rural municipalities, including Roswell and Las Cruces, where beekeeping outside of identified rural zones is defined as a nuisance. So today at that time, had no ordinance nor language addressing beekeeping specifically. This very simple superseded NOI would replace that NOI that the council approved with an adjustment out for public commentary for Councilor Conner late last fall. When it was approved, two of my fellows said that it was so detailed that they didn't feel comfortable considering it further. So it's been really simplified. I want to say here that this NOI, this simple NOI addresses undesirable bee behavior as nuisance. And only relates to beekeeping. That means beekeepers deliberately engaged in keeping honey, urban honeybee hives. I want to say honeybees are really important. They're important pollinators. We know that, and we want to encourage pollination in honeybees. It's when human beekeepers do not manage their hives that those kept bees might develop nuisance, undesirable behaviors. We cannot address wild bees, of course we should not. There are many local native species, as well as some escaped European honeybees. But I do want to make sure that we all realize there is a growing population of Africanized honeybees. Those Africanized honeybees are closely related to the European bees. But unlike the European bees, which are ones that are a big part of honey hives being kept by urban beekeepers, Africanized honeybee hive behavior is unpredictable. The Africanized honeybees tend to be more aggressive, and they tend to swarm more readily and travel further. They can take defensive action much more quickly and in far greater numbers and in far greater distances from the hive. So part of the original NOI, part of this, is to really identify what would be considered undesirable bee behavior. I want to say here that right now, Grant County is considered heavily hybridized with Africanized honeybees. This comes from my numerous conversations with the person who's now the Director of the State APRS, as well as wider communication with the state entomologist that I interviewed. Both of those really emphasize that urban honeybeekeepers need to be vigilant about good hive practices to prevent hybridization. Over the past few months, since the original NOI 1272, I have met with a member of the Grant County Beekeepers Board periodically. I have had conversations with other beekeepers. I've had numerous email conversations with other beekeepers, including some that I then found out after a number of conversations, I found out they didn't even live within our municipal area, not even within our county. So I've had a lot of conversations with those people. I do want to make sure that some of that aren't getting on the record, that some of the comments that were made in public, and sometimes in writing the letters to the editor by members of the Grant County Beekeepers, that some of those comments certainly were not true. They claim for instance that the previously introduced NOI were more stringent than those from other municipalities. I did a great deal of research and yielded over a dozen examples of ordinances from New Mexico, Minnesota, Utah, Indiana, California, West Virginia, and Texas that were as detailed. So this is a much simpler version. The beekeepers also have claimed that having urban honeybee hives would keep out feral Africanized bees. According to the state entomologist, there's no evidence backing that statement. In fact, the state entomologist said that those Africanized bees can fly faster, stronger, more aggressively, and are therefore genetically able to interbreed with new queens much more readily than African European queens. So that was one of the reasons why the entomologist and the APRS emphasized that good management practices were really, really important. And the entomologist also stated that Africanized bees are notorious for hive robbing. So it's possible that having some genetic habits in town would simply seen as easy pickings by some of those feral swarms that we know of now. So in this very simplified NOI, which I actually have a few changes on myself, I want to make sure that folks know that I've really distilled down what were real specific things that the experts in the field had recommended to some very, you know, small statements. I do want to clarify one, and I'm going to ask our town attorney to speak to this. And that is, a couple of the local beekeeper and the entomologist members seem to think that if there was an ordinance, only then would they be held civilly liable if any of their bees developed aggression and attacked people. So I'd like to ask Mr. Scarrow, if a person has a... Had on their property and that bees go forth and attack people, or maybe the dogs or livestock, are those people civilly liable?
Absolutely. And that's under the common law as well as statutory law. It's a tort. It's a wrong against another. There's different levels of tort. For instance, if you're manufacturing dynamite in your basement, even though there may be no law about it, and it explodes, and you weren't even negligent, but it explodes and hurts somebody, you are civilly liable. Any activity that you do that causes harm of another, which reasonably could have been foreseen, you are civilly liable. You don't need an ordinance for that.
Okay, thank you. So in the past year, there have been a series of, not necessarily domestic bee attacks, but fairly recent, a number of dogs. And sheep and other animals have been killed in Dills. So that's pretty close. So we know that these Africanized bees are out there. I do want to say that the Center for Disease Control Statistics indicates that it is likely that in any human population, 5% of people are allergic to bee stings. So that would be about 500 people in Silver City. And of that allergic population, about half are allergic enough so that bee stings will result in a trip to the hospital and a potential death. So that would be 250 people in our town. Seniors, adults, and children. Those are people who have strong cause or concern about undesirable aggressive bee behavior. It is our role as councilors to introduce legislation that even if imperfect, takes steps to guard the public health and safety. This exceedingly simple trend-down NOI will take some small steps. Essentially, what it does is it includes, in the nuisance section, a definition that says an animal might be one that has a combined of stings, so that would be bees. It requires beekeepers, urban beekeepers, to register their hives by meeting with the town manager. So he will be in charge of developing the process of registration. They are supposed to post so that their neighbors know that there are bee hives nearby. This was a protocol that was emphasized both by the state APRS and the state entomologist. And the beekeepers should be managing their hives to prevent nuisance and desirable bee behavior. And so I'm going to read some small changes And so I'm going to read some small changes that I myself am going to make to this NOI. But the following is a chapter that I did make that is openly for public comment, and I'm anticipating that folks will look at it, taking into account what it really means to be having, you know, hives of bees in your backyard and think about whether or not it's common sense of those. The changes that I'm going to propose are that in section 6 dash 15B, it's a simple phrase, "and a public nuisance after the introductory words, it shall be unlawful." And then I'm proposing that we delete section 32-7A.
Excuse me? I didn't quite get my ten ready in time. Could you talk about that again?
6 dash 15B. So there's the introductory words, "it shall be unlawful," which is inserted in there and a public nuisance. And then section 32-7A, I'm proposing that, you go ahead and take that out because I think that it will be covered in other areas. And that means that we really would remove the number, section 32 dash 7B, to be, I'll have to remember. Okay, I'll have to work the ban on this one here. Mr. Scaram, did I, I have my hand with notes here that we both have.
Yes. Okay, so the only changes in the current NOI in front of the council is the 6-15B, where you're inserting the words after "it shall be unlawful," you're adding "and a public nuisance." And then because you're making the declaration of public nuisance there, you don't need 32 dash 7A. So that's gone.
Okay.
Then in 32-7B, which deals with the authorities of the animal control officer, you're, to be consistent, you're moving that under section 6. So that would be changed to section 6, which is now ABC. Proper placement, you'd have the 6, the 32 dash 7B is becoming 6 dash 15C. And then the currency is just getting renumbered as D.
Okay. So these are not huge substantive changes, but I wanted to make sure that folks knew that, just to apologize for the passage, that we will make sure that that gets done before it gets out of the public.
Right. It's less wordy, it's more focused, it doesn't change the nature of the ordinance. It moves the concept of public nuisance to a three-word phrase rather than a paragraph.
Yes. So that's my introductory comment. So I believe that there was a public comment. I don't know, Mr. Mayor, do you want to add that?
First, there's questions or comments from the council. Councilor Condon?
Thank you, Mayor. I have actually several questions I find. Starting on section 6 dash 1, it refers to bees as birds. And I'm almost certain that they are not birds. They're invertebrates.
Good point, thank you, Condon.
I have some question about the animal control officer being able to make determinations about bees. I'm just concerned, are we going to offer some kind of training for animal control officer before this happens? Or, I mean, because we just assume that she knows about puppies and feral cats, but bees are kind of a little bit more intensive.
True. The previous NOI had a whole bunch of descriptions about undesirable bee behavior, including things like chasing passerby's, collecting in water bowls around in near-rim properties. And I think that definitely the animal control officer and probably actually chief, all of the police officers will have further training on what to look for. The most important, I think, I think, is instances of neighbors being concerned. Gosh, I went outside and, or my dog was yelling in there or seemed to be, I took a bee from my neighbor's hive attacking my dog.
And then probably my biggest concern with this whole ordinance is the concept of putting up a sign in your yard. My issue with it has nothing to do with whether bees are safe or not. We're not going to discuss that. My issue with it is that I live in Silver City where everybody who lives here knows that if something is a nail down, people will steal it. Okay? Now you're going to put up a sign and you're going to say, "I have this thing that is quite valuable in my backyard, please come steal it." And to me, that's a big problem. That's going to cause some people who like to break laws to go in and do harm to other residents. And to me, that, that's putting them in a safety issue, another safety issue all of their own. My other concern is that those are very valuable things. So, you know, the investments that those beekeepers are putting into it, and then now they have to figure out a way to safeguard the property even more from people, not from bees, is a concern for me. So I, I don't know if I would like to give residents that other added thing that now they're going to have to put up a sign. We don't have people put up a sign because they have a chihuahua that likes to bark. So why do we have to do that with bees? And a chihuahua can injure you just as badly.
And it's true that roving chihuahua can take you to the factory or kind of vicious. And I think that that is a valid point, Councilor. Thank you for your comments. And earlier in the NOI, I had included what was essentially called biological barriers, which are essentially fences. But it'd be really useful to gather some evidenceary data about how often in urban environments, beekeeping hives full of bees are loaded honey trucks. Let's find out, that's a good point to that guy's note as well.
Councilor Ray?
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a comment for you, Councilor Smith. It says here, "it shall be unlawful for any person to keep bees without registering the location of its hive." Is there a possibility that some of these bees that are in that hive can go to start their own hive or somewhere along the line, maybe within 50 feet or 100 feet of where the person registered? Would that person be liable for it even though the person might not know that the bee hive is away from the original?
So your question is, is it possible for bees in an urban managed hive to swarm and set up their own hive? Swarming is part of reproductive behavior of these, but I have been assured by every beekeeper with whom I have spoken that they have practices to prevent what they call swarming. Swarming for a beekeeper, specific language really is that thing where a colony of bees creates its own queen and then moves her out and follows her where they're going. They're supposed to, they do a good bit of management practices. There are many techniques to keep that from happening.
But there is a possibility.
We hope that they do not allow such a possibility. Essentially, part of this is that we don't want queens to be developed to then be majored with Africanized bees, which the entomologist says is the higher probability here in town. You just want a queen developed that go out showing, possibly aggressive dangerous bees. We don't want that to happen. Beekeepers know how to keep that from happening.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments from the council? Councilor Madison?
So I just want to say that I do agree with this more simplified version, especially with the added amendments that you're going to make because it streamlines that, it's really clear. And I appreciate the comment from Councilor Condon because all I could think when Councilor Condon was discussing it was guard bees on duty. I mean, I just, because they are expensive. It's just like I don't want my animals, my two Pomeranians, who also can exhibit aggressive behavior and damage somebody if they, you know, get them. But I don't want them to be stolen any more than I would want very, in a very expensive, any animal that you keep, whether it be an insect or whatever. But that is a very expensive proposition and it could ensure that the home is targeted in a way that is, that kind of is unexpected. While at the same time, I do agree that it'd be nice if someone notified the public, but I generally speaking as someone who is in that 250 number of people that an EpiPen will not say it even though I carry one. I mean, I know that. I haven't really noticed when I'm out walking where I do know that there's hives, that there's been any, at least for me so far, it's never been anything where there's a whole swarm of bees. If they, if they're out when I'm hiking, then I know that that is not an urban beekeeper doing that. That is, that is most likely an aggressive Africanized colony. So, or hybridized colony with Africanized bees. And I appreciate the clarification that was given after Councilor Ray's comments about, you know, I think basically beekeeping, as I've understood it from everyone that has talked to me, is they manage that so that it will not happen that way. I mean, I think they actually purchase the queens as well to be gentle honeybees rather than an Africanized version is what I understand, and I could be wrong. But I don't see how that person would necessarily be liable if they don't even, I mean, I don't think there's any way to tag these unless you put a radioactive dot on them.
Yes, there is.
So there is, okay. I just was manning little tiny bands around there looking, so I know that that's not the way to do it. But I appreciate the clarification. I appreciate the simplicity, specifically stating what the nuisance is. And the registration of the hives, I think this is important. We register, we're supposed to register our dogs, supposed to register our cats. We're not supposed to let them run around. And I appreciate the fact that if this does go forward, that it opens it up for comment and it also sets notice that our officers as well as our animal control officer will be trained in identifying the behavior that is completely different to cancer dogs.
Uh huh. So I think another comment, Mr. Mayor? And that is, I, Councilor Madison just noted that really good beekeeping practices, namely you purchase on a regular basis, usually the recommendation, recommendation from the entomologist, WAPR, as to is that beekeepers purchase verified impregnated European queens and replace their old queen with a new one every two years. That assures, because within six weeks or eight weeks, the entire hive will be the progeny of that queen. That ensures a genetically more gentle, you know, set of bees. However, I did have communication with a couple beekeepers who told me that hybridization was important, they thought, and they had every plan of letting, developing other hives and letting them fly free, as they said, which pretty much guarantees that they would be Africanized. However, I took the requirement out in this ordinance to purchase every two years gentle European stock, even though all of the beekeeping stuff I've read and by the state experts, they really encouraged that practice. So I would want to really still encourage that practice and hope that the Grant County beekeepers would encourage that practice too. I also do want to tell my colleagues that it's become pretty clear to me that many of the people who were speaking strong objections to me and perhaps to other members, might not even live in Silver City. I had contact from one person who wrote me a long letter telling me, you know, what bad idea it was to regulate beekeeping. And it turned out she didn't even live in Grant County. So I just want to point out that you might get emails, you might get phone calls, they might not be our citizens. And so just be mindful of the fact that what our job is, is to propose legislation for the health and safety of our citizens here within the town of Silver City. And I'm hoping that this simplified NOI, which we go out to public comment and potential changes. I appreciate the questions raised by my colleagues. But, you know, have some time for comment before we come back.
Any other questions? Councilor Condon, Ray?
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a concern also. It might be stretching our policy power and personnel kind of thin on this, on a mission like this. We can't, how can I say, we can't put so much jobs to them. They also have to do other certain things than besides for bees or for barking dogs forever. And that's kind of, kind of stretching, kind of thin. But I see where you're coming from for your bees and all that. And how many people have been registered that you know?
We don't have any ordinance yet, Councilor, that requires any registration.
Okay.
But, you know, I will speak to your concern. I don't envision it becoming a huge job because this is really minimalist. It's not requiring inspection. It's not requiring regular review paperwork. It's really responding to a nuisance.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Well, from my standpoint, I'll make a few comments. I think it is important that the city have some sort of regulation for beekeeping. I think we have a duty to citizens under that provide health, safety, and welfare. The way this ordinance is written, I've got some issues with it, but then that's irrelevant unless I have to vote on it, that I'd be glad to talk about later. But you know, I could see an animal control officer or police officer responding to an angry neighbor about a bee being in their yard or several bees being in their yard. And how will that person even know where those bees came from? And you could be out walking or hiking and you see bees. They're not necessarily wild bees. They could be, but they could also be from a hive of domesticated bees. And that's also a tricky term too, because we say we domesticate dogs, for example, but insects are a whole different breed of things. There's no way to domesticate them or train them. I mean, that's why beekeepers, when they go out to their hive, they got all this paraphernalia on and they smoke them to make them docile and so on. So we're dealing with a wild insect that has natural instincts. And I agree that Africanized bees are more aggressive, but the other bees can be aggressive too if they feel like their hive is being threatened in some way. So anyway, those are my comments right now. I'd like to ask for any public input or questions. Mr. Sexton, you did sign up, but I won't allow anyone to make comments.
Remember our five-minute timeline? So I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak. I have worked with and met with Councilor Linda Aiman Smith on this previous versions of this NOI, and I did not get to work on this version with her. I wish I had. I do have some concerns. The simpler version has a lot of advantages. There are some things here that are pretty strict. So I want to address some questions that the councilors have had. We feel, I'm representing, I'm a member of the Grant County Beekeepers, but that's not known already. But we think it's important to have an ordinance that does not discourage beekeepers. I could argue with what I've heard from the state APRS. The state of Utah does encourage managed hives as a way to deter Africanized bees. The state of Texas, which they have been explicitly Africanized, does not require requeen to manage Africanized bees. They have other techniques. Anyway, I would welcome the chance that this does move forward to continue working with Linda Aiman Smith. I think there's some things that need to be corrected. But this is an important issue. We have an email list for the clubs, about 150 people, but only about 24 members actually are beekeepers, and that includes all of Grant County. As best we can tell, there's four to five beekeepers in Silver City. So if you So if you, whatever ordinance goes to an effect, we'll be managing those hives. I don't know if I made it clear in earlier opportunities to speak, but in the out of nature, where you have feral hives everywhere, there's a hive roughly every one-half mile to a mile or more, depending on the availability of food and water. So regardless of whether a honeybeekeeping ordinance is adopted or not, regardless of what type it is, there will be honeybees, mostly feral, in Silver City. So if any ordinance needs to address that. I think in regards to registration, I think registration is fine for let the force responders identify locations. The Grand County beekeepers, it's been taking note of where the feral hives are. We think it was one of two feral hives near the dog park that actually instigated the attack and recruited the managed hive to participate. Anyway, there's a lot of issues I think that need to be addressed. We're very concerned about the animal control officer having so much authority and ability to determine whether there's a present and imminent danger and whether corrective actions need to be made immediately. So in that regard, and I have talked with her, and I'm glad to hear that she is not afraid of these, we would like to participate in any training that she gets, receives. Our club holds regular mentoring and training sessions, and the next, we're setting up a bee hive at the Commons, so we would like to invite her or anybody else in the council or anybody in the town to attend these free meetings. There's no membership dues or anything. But that would give her a chance to see what normal bees behave like and help recognize, you know, when she does run into a feral bee hive, that there should be a difference, there could be a difference. Anyway, so I think in the current form, the ordinance needs some work. If it is voted on to continue the discussion, I'd like to participate in the development of the NOI. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Okay. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Ms. Ray.
I move to approve the Silver City Notice of Intent to adopt an ordinance limiting Chapter Six, Promises Animals, Section Six dash one definitions, adding a new section of six dash fifteen Keeping of Honeybees, Animal Section Thirty-two dash seven, permitting undesirable bee behavior of the kind of ordinances of the town of Silver City.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Right. Did I say the ordinance number twelve seventy-two?
Yes, but I think you need to say the following amendments, because you were going to make those amendments. You didn't put them into the--
Yes, thank you very much, Counselor. With the following amendments. In Section Six dash fifteen D, insert the phrase "end of uses" after the introductory words of each child being withheld. Delete Section Thirty-two dash seven A in its entirety. Move every number of Section Thirty-three dash seven B to be in Section Six dash fifteen C, and remember the current section Six dash fifteen C to be Section Six dash fifteen D.
Counselor Madison?
Mr. Mayor, I second the motion as stated.
Okay. Now let's have a roll call.
Counselor Madison?
Aye.
Counselor Aiman Smith?
Aye.
Counselor Ray?
Nay.
Counselor Connor?
Aye.
Motion carries to proceeding.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Congress. For the things that have been said before, I would like to warn you, citizens, the next one.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I move for a short break.
Okay, we will take a five-minute break.
Yeah.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thomas Dr. Har. Next item is New Business. New Business eleven A is the approval slash disapproval of bid number eighteen slash nineteen nineteen dash three, twenty eighteen, CDVG Street Improvements. Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Counselor. For the progress of this project, we didn't receive only one bid from Southwest Concrete in paving for the total bid amount, well, base bid amount of seven hundred and thirteen thousand, seven hundred and fourteen dollars, plus gross receipts taxes of fifty-seven thousand ninety-seven dollars and twelve cents, for a total cost of seven hundred and seventy-two thousand, eight hundred and eleven dollars and twelve cents. The total grant for this project that was awarded was seven hundred and forty thousand dollars. I have identified the additional funding that's required so that we can award this project tonight. It is the third phase of the Gila, I mean, the Chihuahua Hill CDVG projects. And as you know, we do water first, then we come back to street sidewalk streams and all that. So this is technically the sixth project that's been in that area. And I believe after this, we will only need one more phase to complete all of the infrastructure on Chihuahua.
Any questions for Mr. Brown?
That's great. That's great.
No questions. Do I hear a motion? Counselor Ray?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve a bid number eighteen slash nineteen three, twenty eighteen, CDVG Street Improvements.
Do I hear a second? Counselor Connor?
I second that motion as stated.
All in favor, say aye.
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 All in nay. Motion carries. Next under New Business is Item eleven B, a discussion and council direction on the future of the recycling program. Mr. Brown will present this, and we can freely discuss any questions or comments we have with him.
Mayor and Council, as you know, over the last couple of years, the recycling markets have dwindled to nearly nothing. The only remaining markets are for metal and cardboard. Cardboard used to be sold for about a hundred and twenty dollars a ton. As of last time we sold cardboard, we got sixty dollars a ton. And so really, those are the only two items that are recyclable in any type of volume anymore. So as you know, what we've been doing is taking, we have a second route which collects the recycling containers, the recyclables from the green containers, the single stream. And what happens is those recyclables are taken to the recycling center where they are, they're not sorted other than taking out most of the cardboard. And then all the single stream material is baled and loaded on a semi-truck, and then we take it down to El Paso, Freedom Recycling in El Paso, because they are the last ones that have been willing to take a single stream at all. And we were paying twenty-eight dollars a ton for the last few months. Before that, we weren't paying anything, and when the markets were good, we were actually getting paid for the recyclables. But as of last week, we were notified that they will start charging us forty-five dollars a ton to accept the recycling recyclables. Our landfill charges forty-eight dollars a ton to landfill all the material. So after running the numbers, after recycling collection, the processing of the material, transportation to El Paso, it's become extremely unfiscally responsible to continue moving in that direction. Because basically, all we'd be doing is baling the material and taking it to them so they could put it in their landfill for forty-five dollars a ton. We ran some numbers today, and if we continue to move in this route, we'll probably be recycling single stream for a hundred, because of the collection, processing, and transportation, plus the additional fee for accepting it, it's going to be costing us approximately a hundred and seventy-seven dollars a ton to take recycling. So, you know, it's, continuing on the program that we have right now is going to be unmanageable. I'm going, we would, if we want to continue what we're doing right now, we will have to raise rates substantially. And I don't, it's not reasonable to raise the rates to take our trash to a different landfill and make people think they're recycling when we're not. I met with the staff from the Solid Waste Authority to see what, what we could do. And basically, the only thing that they can do is, we thought about continuing to collect the recyclables as they are and then just pulling out the cardboard and then landfill everything else. But that still means we're paying forty-eight dollars a ton here rather than over there. The only thing we save on is transportation. But we're still processing all that extra material that we're not doing anything but putting in the landfill. I would recommend that to at least continue a little bit of recycling. We have drop-off points, for example, the one that's out front where single stream is accepted, is to turn all of those drop-off points to solely recycling, I mean, a cardboard at those points. And to discontinue the recycling collection in town, because right now, we technically have two, two vehicles doing every route every day, because we have one doing the garbage collection and the second one doing the recycling pickup. And if we suspend it, we can just have one truck pick up both containers. But I would like to leave those containers out there so that we can hopefully work to develop new markets or new programs, recycling programs. Because I believe if we do suspend the program, we'll be doing it outsell at the Solid Waste Authority, because right now, we pay two hundred and eleven thousand dollars out there. And what we figured was, is if we just went to the, us paying for the roll-offs that are out in specialized areas, and we can add some more later on, that we'll go from paying two hundred and eleven thousand dollars to the landfill for the recycling processing and transportation. And part of collection, because they collect downtown, we also, we do the rest of the collection, is to, it would cost us about sixteen thousand dollars. We would go from two hundred and eleven thousand to sixteen thousand dollars to just collect recycling at these drop-off points. We could use that remaining, the remaining funds that we're doing, that is appropriated towards the recycling program to works for, towards different alternatives. But those are the ideas that we've come up with. We haven't made any definite decisions right now, but I wanted to see where, in the budget that we have today, we have a budget to continue doing what we're doing right now, the most expensive. We'll probably have to add around sixty thousand dollars for the tipping fees at the recycle center if we continue to take it out there. So we will have to move a little bit of money around. But if we suspend it, we'll have quite a significant savings from the recycling program that we can redirect towards educational programs, try to find alternate uses for the recyclables in our community, in the area. And maybe we could even use it to set up a Lido fund, maybe, to help entrepreneurs who want to start up recycling, small recycling uses for the material that we might be able to get at the recycle, at the landfill. And with that, questions, comments, recommendations?
Please feel free to respond, Mr. Brown or among ourselves.
So, Ms. Brown, I guess one of the questions is that the larger containers, you said you only collect the cardboard, and it would be clean cardboard. And so it'll stay on there cardboard only?
Yes, we would change them all and make sure that people know it's cardboard only.
Because otherwise, if it gets contaminated, then we can't even sell that cardboard, meaning if they throw in other materials. And I guess the other question is, is can there be one that says metal? Because you said that they still doing that?
We accept metal down at the landfill. We've never collected it curbside or anything else like that. It's always been collected at the landfill itself.
But tin cans and things like that?
Tin cans, that would have to be separated out and--
Right. And as the--
That would be a big part of processing.
Okay.
And the value of that wouldn't offset any expense.
So we would potentially use some of that money for education to let folks know that there will be locations to drop off cardboard.
There'd be locations to drop off cardboard--
Rather than put out--
Yeah, that will no longer be accepting, collecting single stream. But at the same time, we could work with the New Mexico Right Recycling Coalition to work on education for reuse of all the material that you're currently throwing away.
And can we also encourage, I was going to say, that we could do education, you know, A, about the cardboard and where the locations are in town to receive cardboard only, but, and then, you know, to do the education where we're really explaining that currently, even though we're taking it to El Paso, it's going into their landfill down there, and it's not truly being recycled. There is no market for, for single stream or of most items. But that whole notion of reduce your consumption of things like plastic bottles, you know, encouraging people to get, you know, refillable bottles, things like that, rather than getting, you know, using water that's coming from another municipality. I mean, they say it's spring water, but they show that it's really not most of the time, unless you're paying the big money for it. I guess, I just want to make sure that if we save these funds, that we're going to use them to do education and to really explain to folks what's going on, that this is a decision that the alternative is everybody has to pay more for something that's still going into a landfill somewhere at this point. And it is unfortunately what's going on in the world. And I would also encourage us to use the money to work with the Southwest Corridor and other communities in the area to see if there's some new alternatives that are coming out, but we don't have those, there are these, they burn up the recyclables and turn it into electricity. I mean, wouldn't that be kind of cool if together we could say to P and M, you know what? We think you should look at this, because that is somewhere that these recyclables are going and they're being turned in energy. I mean, because I know there was a piece that I sent you from the New York Times that explained about, it's a Baltimore, somebody had done this, and they converted these big things, so it goes in and literally makes electricity by burning those recyclables that they can. And I'd asked Mr. Brown if there's anything nearby, and he said, no, there isn't.
And a big part of it too is that the solid waste, New Mexico Solid Waste Bureau is sort of a little bit farther behind other states. I think Arizona's permitting programs are, you know, for instance, they've got the, I believe by Albuquerque, they have this plant that they were looking at--
Filling?
Fueling with tires. And they've been trying to permit that for years, and they're nowhere right now. So right now, for instance, the landfill, we have to get rid of tires. We take it to somewhere in Texas, and it's like a full day, one day to get the tires over there, one day to get back. That's how far it is. But it's required that we get rid of the tires some way. So being rural, it's very hard. We've talked to Las Cruces, which is the largest landfill. They're landfilling almost all the recyclables right now.
And I believe Albuquerque is doing the same.
Can I play a resolution?
So I understand fully the calculation of the economic cost of essentially shipping what would just be landfill material, if it makes sense. Have you yet done any calculations about if indeed there are not new markets that arise the effect of landfilling that which we have gotten used to recycling on the lifespan of our current landfill? Because I know that that's always a huge capital and permitting environmental issue in small communities.
Yes, and because of the recycling programs that we've had since, it was since the nineties, we've had it when it was, had pickups on the side. we've had it when it was, had pickups on the side. We have diverted and it's avoided costs because we're deferring that, moving that material somewhere else. So we're saving airspace, is what it's called. We're saving airspace. But technically, the calculation for the cell space right now is forty-eight dollars a ton. That's based on volume calculations from the engineers. Well, it's forty-eight dollars a ton is the cost for the space at our landfill. Yet if we continue to recycle, it's about a hundred-and-seventy-something dollars a ton to pretend we're recycling. So, we, the savings and the airspace comes nowhere close to the extra cost.
But it makes sense that if we would be playing more material in our landfill, that that would be shortening the lifespan of the capacity of landfill. That was my question.
Yes, yes, that is. But we've always looked at cost-benefit, and the value of that airspace right now is forty-eight dollars a ton. And like I said, we're paying one-seventy-something to recycle.
Okay, so that estimated value takes into account the changes in time to fill up the cell?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So periodically, citizens ask me, how come the town does not initiate itself a recycling, actual remanufacturing facility for plastics? And I understand it has quite a complex operation. Do you happen to know where there actually are in the United States any remanufacturing facilities for plastics?
Not in southwest United States that I know of. Because the last time I was, I went to the recycling seminars in, the recycling, state recycling program puts on, there's nothing that will accept any volume. It's more like the reuse of recycled materials for plastics is more for art or stuff like that rather than mass production of a new material.
Okay, I know two plants in New Jersey, and I do not know any other plants outside of New Jersey.
Yes.
Any other discussion or comments?
I guess I have a comment, Mr. Mayor, and it seems like you have been very thoughtful and the town has been very dedicated in trying to do collection and appropriate distribution of potential recyclables. But what we are facing now is that there is no remanufacturing capacity within at least a four-hundred, probably more like a thousand mile radius.
That is correct.
And I would just reiterate what Councilor Amy Smith said, and ask the public to understand that this is, it would be untenable for us to pass these costs on to them for what essentially is not going, we keep saying recycling, when it's going into a landfill. It's not recycling, there is no recycling anymore. I mean, it's not just Silver City. It is across the United States and elsewhere. I mean, that's simply the case as it can be, and it would be untenable at this time to even consider the town itself, a town of ten thousand people, to try to figure out a way to do this, you know, what do you call it? That's reuse, it's basically reuse.
Re-manufacturing.
Yeah, re-manufacturing. I mean, I understand the drive, I mean, I'm big on recycling, I'm one of the ones that pushed this after, you know, and it was going well. But I think that the folks need to understand that our first priority is, yes, the environment is incredibly important, but we don't have any recourse at this time, except for to do what we continue to do and to ensure that we use our money, the monies we get from them appropriately for the needs of, you know, streets and fire and police and, you know, libraries, museums, and, you know, the general fund it needs, and to make sure that we're delivering water to them and that we're picking up, you know, sanitation as it is. I mean, I know that there'll be a lot of folks that are concerned about this, but I think that you've gotta be realistic, this is not just happening here. And we have, we have, as under your, under our direction and under the contracts that you've made, we've extended it as best as we can. And at this point, it's just untenable and it's just really not possible to do something that we all now start really recycling except for the cardboard.
That's correct. So, just for your permission, unless there's any major disagreements or anything, I wanna start looking at, starting to collect both containers with the garbage truck the first week of July. We'll start notifying, we'll put on the radio and the papers and everything we can between now and then, just to give us more time and to set up the containers out here so that they're fully, they've got the signage that it was only for cardboard and those types of things, and to amend the contract out there with the Solid Waste Authority.
Is there any way to take to the top of the recycling bins, something, because not everybody gets the paper and not everybody might hear it?
Yep.
You could just put something on there saying, you know, this card, well, no, cardboard options for, it's not cardboard only, it's cardboard's gonna be at these bigger bins, right? It's gonna be that we will.
We will only be, you can use both containers as trash containers.
Okay, and that's, I think, ultimately, that's the thing that you would have to put on there, is that unfortunately, if you have cardboard, these are the locations where cardboard, clean cardboard can be dropped off.
Yeah, and what I can do is, is I can work with some of the youth nonprofit groups because they're always asking for money for tournaments and all stuff like that. Maybe we can get them to work in doing some of that, distributing that on the containers so they won't have to walk up to the house. So for instance, the Tuesday route, we can have them working on the containers on the Tuesday route, and then the following, each day to try to get as many pamphlets or whatever it might be of on the containers.
Yeah, thank you.
Currently, how much does the household pay for those recyclable, recycling containers?
It's built into your, to your fee.
So, those who give up those containers, receive a credit back?
No.
They still have to pay for them even though they're not used?
Those are, those are built in your fee currently, what you're paying right now. So if you have a recycling container, your fee will not change. But you can continue to use it as, for trash now.
But if you don't need two for trash?
You can take, well, you were using one for trash and one for recycling. Now, the recycling will no longer be picking up recycling, so you can continue to put recycling there, but it's gonna go into the landfill.
But they're paying for a container they're not using, right?
No, you're not. We will not change the rates whatsoever, right now. The only thing we're not gonna do is distribute more recycling containers so people will don't, because what will happen is, if they got a ninety-five dollar container, they'll say, well, give me a recycling container, so I'll take a thirty-five dollar container. So the rate will go down, yet they're throwing the same trash, or even more.
Because I think it's important, Mr. Mayor, for folks to know that currently, you pay as you throw. So I have a smaller container because that's giving more recycling. And so he's saying that that smaller container will still be the same rate, the next one will be the same rate, and then the larger one will be the same rate. But now, you can use the recycling container, if you have one, you don't get one, if you have one, as a trash bin, because it will be put in the trash. So there's not gonna be a change unless someone says, take away my recycling bin and give me another large trash can.
A bigger trash container.
Yeah, I mean, that's the only way that there'd be rate change this year.
Okay, let's move on. Eleven C, under new business eleven C, the approval slash disapproval of resolution number twenty-nineteen dash fifteen, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a certification of support for the accreditation of the Town of Silver City Museum. Alex?
Mayor Council, as part of the reaccreditation for the museum, there is a requirement to have some sort of affirmation that the city supports the museum, I was gonna say that, the museum. And when the museum was set up back in nineteen-sixty-seven, there was no resolution setting it up or anything, it was just added to the budget. And just like other divisions have happened over the years. And so, but the recycle, but the accreditation still requires some sort of resolution or letter from the town council, and that's what we're asking for today.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
As a sponsor of this, I can confirm that that letter has to actually state about the permanence of the museum as a town department and funding for it. It's required by the accrediting body that there be an affirmation of permanence of the museum, that there is, if there is no letter forthcoming from you, then they will not accept reaccreditation because we have to state that this is our department, it is funded, it is, you know, and at some point, if it becomes necessary, it may need to be a resolution in the future. But I think that the letter suffices, my understanding, about the accreditation process for museums.
Yes, we have, we were, we are accredited right now. When that happened, they didn't require this resolution. This is a new requirement from last time that we accredited.
Okay, any questions or comments from the council? Any questions or comments from the general public? Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Madison?
I'm moved to approve of resolution number twenty-nineteen dash fifteen, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a certification of support for the accreditation of the Town of Silver City Museum.
Is there a second? Counselor Amy Smith?
Just one last second, that motion is due.
Any discussion? Roll call please, Ann.
Counselor Madison?
Aye.
Counselor Amy Smith?
Aye.
Counselor Ray?
Aye.
Counselor Connor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item under new business is eleven D, the approval slash disapproval of resolution number twenty-nineteen dash sixteen, a resolution to adopt a municipal records retention policy and email retention guidelines. Ann?
Yes, Mayor and Counselor, a little bit of background, and you'll probably remember this, but back in twenty-fifteen, the State Records and Archives Division repealed their state record schedules, which included the municipal records. So when it was repealed, we were left without a record schedule. The General Counsel of the New Mexico Municipal League told the municipal clerks that you can adopt the state's repealed schedules and use them as your own, or you can create your own. And the reason he could say that is because the state said they had no jurisdiction over municipal records. Whatever we create, we can destroy. So, in twenty-seventeen, the town council adopted a resolution at my recommendation that we adopt the repealed state schedules so we can continue our records management. We've done annual destructions, and we wanted to continue that and not get backlogged. Over that next year and a half, the municipal clerks of the, New Mexico Municipal Clerks and Finance Officers Association's created a committee of a bunch of clerks, and we worked on creating our own municipal record schedules. So we pulled the municipal records from the repealed state schedules to start our list. And then, from there, we worked on fine-tuning the descriptions, and each municipal clerk sent it to their department heads to review, so we got feedback from department heads. So, this resolution is asking that we adopt that municipal records schedule that a lot of other municipalities are going to adopt. There's always the option to fine-tune it the way Silver City wants it because it's our schedule. So if our department heads later decide we need to revise it in some way, we can do that. So I'm asking for your approval.
Any questions or comments for Ms. Mackey? Counselor Amy Smith?
Ms. Mackey, many years ago, when my first professional job was as the document control officer for a large quality assurance organization, and I was thrilled at the completeness of this particular document control process. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Amy Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm moved to approve resolution number twenty-nineteen dash sixteen, a resolution for adopting municipal records retention policy and email retention guidelines.
Thank you. Is there a second? Counselor Ray?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll second as read.
Motion and second, any discussion? Hold on, a roll call please, Ann.
Counselor Madison?
Aye.
Counselor Amy Smith?
Aye.
Counselor Ray?
Aye.
Counselor Connor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next under new business is agenda item eleven E, the appointments to the Historic Design Review Committee. The town received applications from Stephen Schellendick and Suzanne Gerchison to continue their service on the town's Historic Design Review Committee. The chair and the community development director recommend their reappointment. If there is no objection from the council, I would like to reappoint them.
Go ahead.
If there be no objection, they are hereby reappointed. Next, under new business is agenda item eleven F, the approval slash disapproval of notice of intent number twelve eighty, in ordinance amending chapter thirty-four, section thirty-four dash two-oh-one A, B, and C relating to aggressive begging and prohibited solicitations upon town-owned streets and public right-of-way, rights-of-way, and chapter ten, section ten dash one-three-seven, unsolicited entry onto private property prohibited, and section ten dash one-thirty-nine, unlawful to enter upon posted premises, and the Town of Silver City Municipal Code. Counselor Madison, I think this is your, you know, eh?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm gonna turn it over to Counselor Scabron so that he can address why we're doing this. I was one of the original co-sponsors of the formal ordinance, and there are substantive changes that Counselor Scabron will address.
Mayor Council, in two thousand and ten, there was a buildup that culminated in inordinance because the aggressive begging was becoming a problem in town. The prior laws talked about panhandling, and panhandling was held to be an expression of the freedom of speech. So we revised back in two thousand and ten, most of our laws that prohibited panhandling on streets. Some years prior to that, there were laws about homelessness and vagrancy, finding that being homeless or being vagrant was also an expression of the freedom of speech. So there's been an evolution, starting way back, more so in the late nineties to this date, where behaviors that were annoying to the public have been held to be, the right of the expresser of the behavior was considered to be a freedom of speech that couldn't be impinged on by government. impinged on by government. Well, that trend has continued from 2010 to now. About a year or two after this ordinance was passed, laws started changing in the circuits, the federal circuits, leading to Supreme Court cases and New Mexico state cases. So what this ordinance is doing is it's eliminating the stress on begging, aggressive panhandling, solicitation to conform with the new law, with the trend of the law. So for instance, in our previous ordinance, we said that you couldn't, that people couldn't ask for or solicit money or anything else within a certain number of feet from a drive-in bank teller's window or a check cashing location, and which, and they're all private property. So the courts have said, leave it to the private property owner to determine who enters, who comes on my property and solicits. The government has gone too far in dictating behavior on private property. Secondly, they said that if you're targeting people with signs at intersections, you're targeting people expressing their freedom of speech, and that's more important than your public safety concerns. So there's language here that talks about roadway pedestrian and driver protection, not solicitation, not prohibited solicitations. It talks about any behavior that would tend to distract a driver, to interfere with a pedestrian, or interfere with a bicyclist. So the, those are the main changes. The aggressive manner, it used to be aggressive manner, was related to how you're expressing your speech. Now aggressive manner, these are basically intentionally or recklessly making physical contact. Well, that's an assault. Say, well, an argument is, why don't we just enforce this under the assault law, rather than making it attached to somebody assaulting you while they're trying to speak to you? Well, we, a lot of regulations, a lot of law is an attempt to educate. The people are going to break the law, but most people want to know what the law is so they can conform to it. So if you're soliciting on the street, that's okay, that's legal. If someone says no, and then you get in their face and try to intimidate them or touch them, that's an assault. So the people that are doing the soliciting need to know that they don't have a blank check, that in the process of their solicitation, they can touch or intimidate somebody. They can't. We've eliminated a lot of language like prohibited solicitations, solicitation near a street or highway deleted in its entirety, we deleted prohibited solicitations, deleted in their entirety, we've stopped trying to enforce behavior, freedom of speech on private property, that's up to the landowner. If the bank doesn't want people soliciting at their drive-in windows, they need to put a sign, they need to take whatever actions required. Another, now, some of this, this is, the knowledge of this and the impetus for doing this now has come from two sources. One is from the ACLU. The ACLU said that our ordinance was too broad on solicitations, private property solicitations, focusing more on the freedom of, regulating the freedom of speech than on absolute necessity of public safety. And the first thing that they requested or demanded, under threat of lawsuit, because that's the way they operate, Albuquerque and Las Cruces have stopped entirely enforcing their solicitation ordinances. I have consulted with the chief, and we have not had an arrest or a prosecution of any solicitation, anything involving exercise of freedom of speech. So we have no cause to be worried about litigation. This ordinance, I haven't, this, the second issue came from recently, from an attorney for a company that sends out, they go to different towns and they hire young people or whatever to go door-to-door. And this particular attorney told us that our ordinance that prohibited door-to-door was not in compliance with this new trend of law, and I have to agree. Again, it's private property, and the city, all the cities, because everybody had basically the same ordinances, the cities were out of place in trying to regulate the contact, the expression of freedom of speech to a person even on their private property. That's up to the private property owner. So we've changed that. And the only offense now is that if either you have a sign that says no peddlers, no solicitations, or when the person comes on your property, you tell them, get off my property. This is not a city matter to, to cause them not even to be able to enter the property. So this requires us to pull back and leave the responsibility for access to private property upon the property owner. So I was advised that there will be, there may be several waves of people coming this summer to open your gate lawfully and enter your property and bang on your door. There's not even any restrictions on time and place when they can do it, although some cases say that it has to be within reasonable hours. My personal feeling is that it's, that the matter is tilted far too far in favor of those who want to enter your property as opposed to your right to privacy. So the advice that I'm giving is that the city will no longer protect your private property from people entering to do solicitations for sales of goods or services, that if you don't want these people coming on your property, that you need to put up a sign, and the words would be, no peddlers, no solicitations.
Okay. I, I just want to stop you there. I mean, the people can put on their fences, private property, no trespassers permitted. It is their private property.
Right, but even that's not totally clear, because there, there seems to be a balance now. The balance is, like I say, I feel personally, it's a little out of whack. The no trespassing means someone coming on without consent, but the consent is built in by you being alive and having a piece of private property. You have to take an affirmative step, and that's why the language has to say, no peddlers or solicitors. Because what's, what's happening is that the peddlers and solicitors, and they have a strong lobby, I mean, it's big business. But when you put a no trespassing sign up, implicit in that sign is that an ambulance, EMS can come on, the mailman could come on, but not, and also a solicitor. So the solicitors and the peddlers are, have gained the same status basically as the mailman, EMS, and the fire and police department.
Okay, so I would just say that in the last several weeks, I have had young men that I don't know who they are knock on my door at 9:00 p.m. You think I'm going to open the door? I would not do that. I wouldn't do it in the one, in the two that did it at 10:00 p.m. There was no urgency, there was nothing going on, they were clearly one of the, you know, so, I mean, they have other options than looking out the window. But, you know, after several years, Mr. Scabron, of telling people that they didn't have to do this, that we protected them, I think it's really critical that if this NOI goes the next step, and it does come to some sort of fruition where we do this, that we actually make sure the public, in everything we can, advertise that you've got to put this on your gate. You've got, if you have a gate, you need to put it on your gate. And, and that, that's wording, you know, no solicitations, you know, some people put no solicitations are proselytizing. I mean, that's common throughout California.
Well, proselytizing's not the word that you use. You say, because the, our actual municipal code says words to that effect. You say, no peddlers, no solicitation. When you say no solicitation, it means proselytizing, it means asking for money, it means, can I come sleep in your backyard? A solicitation of anything.
So given that this is going to be in this, because I don't remember seeing this section, and I'm glad it's in here, that these are the words that, because it would be in an ordinance if it passes all the way through, these are the words that we would recommend that individual landowners make sure they post visibly.
If they, if they don't want...
If they don't want people coming.
And if they are bothered and you say, if you don't have the sign, and somebody comes to the door and you say, get off my property, I'm not interested, if they, if they do not leave immediately, that's a crime. You call the cops.
Okay. So I think you did a really good discussion of really, it's, it's the, like we've done in the past with other ordinances that we've moved forward on, it's about stating the behavior that would impact someone in a, that would not be within the, that would be something we'd be concerned of, concerned for as to health, safety, and welfare. So we're basically telling people what we, we want you, you know, we're not going to say you can't have free speech, we're not going to say that you can't solicit, that you can't ask for funds, but if you're going to do so, you can't touch someone aggressively. You can't, you can't intentionally or recklessly block the safe or free package passage of another, whether a pedestrian or the operator of a motor vehicle or a bicycle on public streets and ride bikes. And that includes bike lanes. They can't be standing in the bike lane and prevent that. So everything is about aggressive behavior, which is a behavior, not the act of asking for assistance.
That's, that's correct. There's, it's the, someone's freedom of speech or right to walk down a sidewalk doesn't give them the right to knock you over if you're in their way. It doesn't give them the right to obstruct your free passage, you have rights as well. The concern is that if you want to regulate free speech, and now everything that you do is considered to be an expression of your speech, that you, your own fundamental rights of free passage, freedom from intimidation, freedom from assault, are not sacrificed. It's a delicate balance. So this ordinance attempts to meet that balance. Maybe the trend will continue, or maybe it'll reverse and go back, go backwards a little bit, where public safety is viewed equally with the freedom of expression.
So that's the presentation, and Mayor, I would ask if the council has any questions.
Any questions or comments from the council? Do I hear a motion? Counselor Edison?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm moved to approve of Notice of Intent Ordinance Number 1280, an ordinance amending Chapter 34, Section 34-201A, B, and C relating to aggressive begging and prohibited solicitations upon town-owned streets and public right-of, rights-of-way, in Chapter 10, Section 10-137, unsolicited entry onto private property prohibited, and Section 10-139, unlawful to enter upon posted premises of the Town of Silver City Municipal Code.
Thank you. Is there a second? Counselor Ennis Smith?
Mr. Mayor, I have a second and the motion is stated.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Proposed nay. Motion passes. Next under new business is Agenda Item 11G, the approval slash disapproval of Addendum Number 1, July 1, 2018 to June 30, 2020, agreement between the Town of Silver City and the Fraternal Order of Police Silver City Police Officers Association. Mr. Brown?
Mayor Council, I'm glad you had an agreement, an agreement that we're negotiating with the FOP, the union for the police department. Both the, well, the, the union's membership has voted and approved this agreement. The intent of, in their agreement, they contain language that every year we top, open up negotiations for money matters throughout the term of the contract. This contract ends at the end of 2020. These were some items that we discussed. There was, the converted sick leave issue was mainly the one that I decided that we needed to, to limit in their agreement because the way that the language was written, they could, they could convert all of their accumulated sick leave towards early retirement, and what was happening there is that we were having situations where officers were on early retirement for eight months, I believe, so we couldn't fill that position for eight months. And so they were willing to limit that. And, and between that limitation and the fact that we are going to have some other officers that are going to retire this next year, we had some retirees last year, basically what we've agreed to, to give them, we've made up through attrition from the higher-paid retiring employees to the, to the newer, newer employees, but this is intended to keep good quality employees with our department. When I first started, the average length of service at the police department was two years, except for the sergeants and above. Now I believe the average length of service is around eight to 10 years in most cases. And so we're, we're getting a lot closer to, to officers that are starting to retire. So I had to look at that, look at it from a little bit different perspective than I had, had looked at it in the past. And so with that, if you have any specific questions on...
Any questions or comments? Do I hear a motion? Counselor Thomas?
I'm moved to approve of Addendum Number 1, July 1, 2018 to June 30, 2020, agreement between the Town of Silver City and the Fraternal Order of Police Silver City Police Officers Association.
Have a motion, is there a second? Counselor Ray?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll second as read.
Thank you. Any discussion? Roll call, please, Ann.
Counselor Connor?
Aye.
Counselor Ray?
Aye.
Counselor Ennis Smith?
Aye.
Counselor Ray?
Motion carries unanimously. Before I move on, Mr. Scabron, when you were presenting information on Ordinance 12A, it was apparent that you spent quite a bit of time researching this, and thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Under Item 11H is the approval slash disapproval of an agreement between the Town of Silver City and American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, ASME, Council Number 18, Roll Call Number 3370, from July 1, 2019 to June 30, 2022. Mr. Brown?
Mayor Council, this is actually a brand-new agreement. These are just the, the changes from the agreement that we have that expires at the end of this fiscal year, and this agreement is for a period of three years, and included are the issues that we negotiated. I think that something that we did look at is because the employees that are covered by the ASME contract tend to be the lower-paid personnel, and with the minimum wage increasing over the next few years, we, I decided that it was appropriate for us to increase, although we hire all of our employees at above minimum wage, current and what is going to be. We have... have, I decided to negotiate and ensure that we can increase them at the same rate as the minimum wage is going to increase.
Any questions, Mr. Brown?
One, one thing on top of that, which I should have said on the first one, all of these changes that we've talked about with the FOP and this one, they were included in the preliminary budget that I presented to you at the last council meeting, so...
Right.
Just for that information.
Do I hear a motion? Council Connaught?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve of an agreement between the Town of Silver City and American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, ASME, Council Number 18, Local Number 3370, from July 1, 2019 to June 30, 2022.
Thank you. Is there a second? Council Ray?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll second that as stated.
Any discussion? Roll call, please, then.
Council Connaught?
Aye.
Council Ray?
Aye.
Council Ennis Smith?
Aye.
Council Madison?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item under new business is Agenda Item 11I, the approval/disapproval of the preliminary budget for the fiscal year 2019-2020. Alex, this is yours, too.
Mayor Johnson, this is the preliminary budget that I presented to you at the last council meeting. The only change is there is a slight change in projected revenues, which have increased a little bit in the general fund, because of course, seats fully paid, they've got, and other than that, everything is exactly the same as I presented previously.
Any questions or comments, Mr. Brown? Do I hear a motion?
I do have a comment, Mayor.
Oh, Council Madison?
Thank you. So I just want to remind the public that there is no hold-harmless GRT increment in this budget, that we are not passing any, nor was any requested.
No, the only, the only request of increase was water rates, 30 cent increase per thousand gallons, and that's across the board for everyone.
For everyone.
Other than that, you know, we do have access to 3/8 of gross, hold-harmless gross seats taxes that we can impose by ordinance. I'm not requesting to do that. We have property tax, I believe we have five mils of property tax we can impose. I'm not asking to do any of that. And, you know, although hold-harmless is being phased out, our revenues have continued to increase at a rate faster than that hold-harmless is phasing out, so we've been doing pretty good.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Any other questions or comments? Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Council Connaught?
I move to approve of the preliminary budget for fiscal year 2019-2020.
Thank you. Is there a second? Council Ray?
Thank you. I'll second that as stated.
Motion and second. Any discussion? Roll call, please, then.
Council Connaught?
Aye.
Council Ray?
Aye.
Council Ennis Smith?
Aye.
Council Madison?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next, under new business is Agenda Item 11J, the approval/disapproval to go into closed session pursuant to NMSA 1978, Section 10-15-1H8, for meetings for the discussion of the purchase, acquisition, or disposal of real property or water rights by the public body. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Council Madison?
I move that the town council go into closed session pursuant to NMSA 1978, Section 10-15-1H8, for meetings for the discussion of the purchase, acquisition, or disposal of real property or water rights by the public body.
Thank you. Do I hear a second? Councilwoman Smith?
Mr. Mayor, I second that as stated.
Is there any discussion? Roll call, please, then.
Council Madison?
Aye.
Council Ennis Smith?
Aye.
Council Ray?
Aye.
Council Connaught?
Aye.
Motion passes. The council will convene in the conference room after a five-minute recess. The council is back in session, and no matters other than those matters included in the initial motion to go into executive session will discuss. At this time, I will ask the council members for their affirmation of that statement. Roll call, please, then.
Council Connaught?
Aye.
Council Ray?
Aye.
Council Ennis Smith?
Aye.
Council Madison?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. This concludes the business of the Town of Silver City. Do I hear a motion?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor? I second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Please adjourn.